Let's call this meeting to order and rise for the flag, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I think we're still in the tornado loft, aren't we? I said, well, at least we'll be posted at E and A. If something happens, we'll be good. First up tonight, let's get a project update from Mr. Kickenbach.
All righty, you have your sheet before you move. And this is your bi-weekly sheet. And as always, everything that's highlighted in yellow is what has changed since the last time. You can look at the numbers yourself, although the projects, a little explanation on those. The courthouse exterior project is coming to a close. We're awaiting a punch list to be scheduled for that. I'll be meeting with our architect on Friday, so I'll get a little more information when we can schedule that punch list for the courthouse exterior. The annex generator installation, I have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for April 26th, and then I'll set the schedule for the installation of that project. The current generator test panel replacement, that will be scheduled for April 24th. That will be done after hour because we have to shut down some of our servers and some of the power to 911. They will actually move out into their mobile command center while we're shutting down the power to that area of the building. Should take a couple of hours, so we'll be on, the power will be off. They will be in their mobile command center. And our sump pumps that run this building will be on a portable generator because those have to keep pumping at all times. And then the Coleman Center roof, again, that's part of that meeting on the 19th. We'll be talking about the Coleman Center roof project and how we proceed with that, as well as other projects that Jeff has talked to you about on the landscape and hardscape for the courthouse campus. The First Bank Expo Hall HVAC, we thought we could see the light on the end of the tunnel on that one, but the ductwork replacement for a portion to finish that has been delayed. And it looks like the first week in May is when that will be finished now. The annex ejector pump panel, that has been replaced and that project is completed. The sewer pump panel, those parts are here, and that will be replaced because that portable generator that we're using for the generator repair will also be used for that repair as well because those sump pumps will have to be taken off of their electric power while they're replacing that power, while they're replacing that panel. And then the horse bar roof, the fairgrounds, the commissioners, we did receive three quotes. The commissioners approved the lowest quote at their last meeting. The quote budget came in at $61,000. As you recall, that is a project, you can see there in column H, that we had set aside $135,000 in ARBA. So we don't, unless we just get the roof off and see something significant that we can't see from the outside, that project will come in considerably under the estimate. And again, the figures in the lower right-hand corner show your balances of your funds. Any questions?
I do have a comment, not about this, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you, Steve, for the buildings and grounds maintenance. People, I was in the courthouse today, and the guys doing the floor waxing or whatever. So thank you to the commissioners. It looks great. I thought the floor was wet at first. They said, nope, it's not wet. It's just the new wax. So anyway, Mark's done a great job.
I appreciate that. This is a gentleman that we hired from, who was working at Northeastern Schools, and he wanted something closer to home, lives in Dublin. And he specializes in floors. And I kind of blew that off when we first hired him, but he has stripped it down. All the bricks down below, and they look like when the building was first built. We had had the marble in the courthouse done a number of years ago. And just one floor at that time cost $30,000 to have it stripped and sealed. And this guy's been doing it in-house, and it looks pretty good, I gotta say.
Yeah, he even did the kickboards along his side. It just looks wonderful. So anyway, I wanted to point that out and say thank you. That looks great.
Thought I had that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? All right, Mr. Posture?
I'm going to spend some time talking about Stellar beginning tonight. And I'm trying to remember, I know that the commissioners approved the application for Stellar as council. Approved that yet? Or did you not bring it to you? I don't think we did. So I think we did it last week, and so, at any rate, let's make doubly sure that you've approved it by, let me introduce you to Stellar, which is similar to Help, but without the ARBA funds. The Help had $1 million of community development block grants associated with it. Stellar is a process that will go through a similar planning process and end up with a strategic investment plan. It is, this year, it is done by regions, which Oprah defines as a county that has two or more communities going together to apply as a region. So the application process will end on May the 1st. We have to have a letter of intent submitted by then. We are working with the Wayne County Foundation, who this time will be the lead applicant. And Akosia St. John from the Wayne County Foundation and the full Wayne County program have been making the rounds of all of the communities that have expressed interest. Up to this point, we have commitments from East Germantown, Economy, City of Richmond, Wayne County Commissioners. We also have Hagerstown, Centerville, and Greensport, who were not able to participate in the Help program for one reason or another. They have signed on to the Stellar application. And next week, we'll make the final visit to Fountain City. And they also were not participants in the Help program, but have expressed interest now in participating in Stellar. So what is Stellar? It is a process whereby all of the communities that participate with us will create, through community engagement, a strategic investment plan. And then the county itself will incorporate all of those local strategic investment plans into a countywide strategic investment plan. I should point out that because Cambridge City and Dublin received community development block grant money from the Help program, they were ruled to be ineligible for this application by Oprah. In fact, originally, they had said that the whole county was ineligible. And I got with our legislators, and we had some conversations to say, hey, we have eight communities, eight entities, governmental entities, participate in the Help process, and only two of them see community development block grants. And so they finally relented and said that only those two that received money would be ineligible for this round of applications. So they know about that. These other groups have all signed on board. Fountain City would be the last if they agree next week. And so I would like to invite the county council to also sign on. There is no financial commitment at this time. Again, it's a commitment of time and effort and staffing to participate fully in the community engagement component. With the letter of intent, and I and three others spent two days of training with Oprah to learn about the program. That was a requirement to be eligible to submit a letter of intent. There were 32 counties that attended that training, so all of them would be eligible. We don't expect that they all will apply, but I think probably 15 or 20 at least will. From that group of applicants, they will select four finalists. The four finalists will each receive a $50,000 grant to hire consultants to assist with the planning process. That planning process, we would be notified if we're a finalist by sometime in June. Planning process would run through October of this year. By November, we have to submit the completed application and strategic investment plan. We would do a presentation to Oprah and all of their partner agencies. There are six or seven partner agencies that also are contributing some funding towards this process. And then by January, we'll know if we've been accepted as one of two of the designees. And the designees will each receive commitments of funding of up to $8 million each. That's $4 million of community development block grant funding from Oprah. There's $1.5 million of funding from NDOT. And then there are lesser amounts from several different state entities, state agencies, totaling roughly $8 million for each of the two designees. That would be divided among the, I don't know, four, six, eight, eight potential communities that would be participating with us. Again, no funding requirement upfront, but like most state grants, there would be a match requirement for most of these streams of funding in the 10% to 20% range. So that would have to be worked out depending on which of these communities is assigned that particular funding stream. And the exact project also influences what the match requirement would be. So I think it's a great process. It incorporates, hopefully, three, maybe, at least three, maybe four communities that did not participate in Help for one reason or another. Real excited about having them on board to work with them in this planning process, to identify priorities for each of the communities so that we, as county government, understand what their needs and aspirations are and can help them wherever possible. If we are not selected ultimately, I think the strategic investment plan is still valid, and there are other funding sources that we can pursue in collaboration with them. So I think it's a great process. I hope you all will agree and approve us signing a document that supports the application. The one hiccup at the moment is that document has to include the entire list of all of the communities that are participating. And at this moment, we still don't know about Fountain City, so we'll need your approval of a document that has kind of a blank at the top of which communities are participating. And if you can authorize the president of council to sign, assuming that you're willing to support this application, we can get that document as soon as we meet with Fountain City next week and know whether they're in or out. And then the application itself needs to go in by May the 1st, so. Exactly. So I need your endorsement of this process today if you want to sign on board.
Over to we sign on to Stellar application. Will I allow the chairman, president, council to sign?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Just let me know.
Thank you all very much. We'll keep you posted on where we're at with that. And with that, and I know you have Beth on, Beth Fields on the agenda later on to get some documents signed that are connected to the Help process. But I would like for her to also give you an update on where we're at with ARBA expenditures, and that's the community development. She's tracking all of that, and we've got an updated spreadsheet for you. So Beth, do you want to do that now?
Oh, we got it.
Until she comes on.
Couple other things. Yeah, let's just wait.
Okay. She can do that later on, do the agenda.
Do you have anything else for us?
Not unless you have questions for us.
Good. Next up, real quick, we need to approve the minutes from March 20th. Council Commissioner workshop. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
For approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion, cheers. Thank you.
All right. Now, next, I guess we have Nancy Funk and Mark Culture. In the future, please just email Jeff and myself about being on the agenda because we didn't know anything about this tonight. So if you can just remember that in the future, to ask us if it's okay to be on the agenda.
You did ask me, didn't you?
I did ask you. It's okay. He forgot.
And she's my favorite treasurer, too. 37 more Mondays, anyway.
Yes. All right.
Well, I'm here again to talk to you about Senate Bill 183 that was passed. Doesn't affect July 1st. And Senator Roth sponsored this bill for us that would do away with the assessing and taxing of mobile homes. So I didn't know this was how this was going to be. Sorry.
You don't need to know. You don't need to know.
You either already know, or you don't need to know. Sorry.
So I did some data on the last two years of mobile homes and what it gets, what it means to each unit. I don't know if you're aware that the mobile home revenue taxes is miscellaneous revenue. It does not play into your tax levy. So doing away with that, not a big financial hit. You can see what's billed, what's collected for the last two years. Without a mobile home tax sale, I would say our collection would go down because I send several letters to these people, certified letters. Then we go out and put stickers on the mobile homes and tell them the auction date, and they will be auctioned. And that's usually when the last ones will come in and pay so they don't lose their home. The fiscal body has to be the one to pass this Home Rule ordinance, and that's the council folks. I need you to ask questions. I, you know, mobile homes are not a fun thing in our office at all. And we spend more money trying to chase them down for payment than we probably receive. Last year, the mobile home tax sale, I had 10 on the sale when it finally came to the sale itself. And when we went out to put the stickers on them to say they would be sold, two of them had been moved, who knows where. Some people did pay. And then there was two that had stickers on them for the Indiana Board of Health telling the park owner he had no need dates to tear them down. So those didn't sell. And then we had two that still left that would be offered again this year.
You, I don't see Wayne County on this. Am I just missing it? Or do we not have any mobile homes in Wayne County?
No. If it's not, there's none there. There's none there. Nope.
Okay, so there's no.
Wayne Township doesn't.
There's no impact to Wayne County government?
Wayne County, the money from the mobile homes goes to the units. This is where the money went. This is what was billed.
So all this money collected does not go in the county revenue?
It goes to the units. You know, when I collect on a mobile home, it goes to Abington. If it's billed in Jefferson, it goes to Jefferson.
And there are, that's, thank you, that's new.
It's not.
Goes to township.
It goes to the units where they're sitting. That's why I printed this out so you could see. So like in Abington Township, they would lose $60.36.
Yeah, but in Webster, they'd lose $6,000. Jackson would lose $8,000.
Of course, it's just a bit because Richmond's got all the home parks.
Yeah. I mean, I feel like those are the people who need to be weighing in on this.
Yeah.
Isn't that Nancy divided between if there's a school or a library or something else? It isn't that unit gets all of that. It's divided between all of those, if there are any.
So it's not like personal property. Other personal property. Yeah, county rate applied to it.
Well, it has the rates of that township applied to it, just like a tax bill. Personal property tax bill, same thing.
There's no county rate.
Also, not county rate that applies to a tax bill.
Right. We don't. We're in miscellaneous revenue here. So another fact, I think Mark wanted to talk to you about it. If you lost $116,000 or $125,000 to these units, we have done more corrections of errors already this year than what you would lose in mobile homes. And he has that data. I do not have that. That's not my side.
Correction of errors of mobile homes?
No. Tax bills, that would affect your levy. That does affect collections, but all those.
So you're saying your time might be better spent correcting errors than
Yes.
doing all this work on behalf of other taxing units?
Yes. We could really maybe spend time not having so many errors in our processes.
Yeah. And this is time-consuming for very little money and no money to the county.
Right. This.
Which, again, to me begs the question of the mobile home sale, which no other county does.
Right. People have tried it, and they're like, it's too much trouble. We can't collect. How do you do it that you get money? Well.
We get very much.
Kathy Williams started it, and I'm following right along. And it's worked for us somewhat. You know, we have homes that.
But again, you're doing that in an effort to collect money for these units.
Yes.
And it sounds like you're making the argument that at least if you didn't, if you focused on correcting errors, that would have a bigger impact than doing the sale has.
I have to say, the error correction is not in my office.
It's not in your office. I understand that. I understand that. And so what other offices actually participate in the tax, in the sale of the mobile homes?
Well, at the point of the sale, it's me.
But leading up to that, are there?
We have an assessor and an auditor, and then.
And those folks would be the ones that could be, could spend that time correcting errors rather than laying the groundwork for your mobile home sale.
Right. Now, this doesn't, I probably told you, but just a reminder, it goes in effect July 1st, so it wouldn't affect Wayne County in any way until January 1, 2025.
Except that there are two issues here. One is the sale of mobile homes.
Right.
And the other is whether you collect taxes on mobile homes at all.
Whether we assess them.
Whether you assess them.
Yes. The assessors tied in on Senate Bill 183 that.
But if you don't assess it, you're not going to bill for it.
Period.
So if I can add to that from having been the treasurer for eight years, so what happens, here's a poor instance, very time-consuming. This year, the mobile home park assesses that bill in the name of Max Smith. Next year, it's his wife. The next year, it's the mother-in-law. They all live there, and you're chasing and trying to fix. And who owns it? Who, you know, who actually is the person liable for this? And they are supposed to come in and get the report, you know, the P for a moving transfer. They're supposed to tell us when they move them. They don't do that most of the time. And I think the law, you know, changed to where this is personal property is what, $80,000 and below? This is personal property, but we have very few that are worth more than $80,000. And when they put all this into place back in the day, it was on the BMV, but then they had no policing arm. Oh, counties, you take it. You send your assessors out. It spends a lot of time for no more money than we get, except in the large counties where they're up on the lakes. And oh, yeah, they got, you know, $500,000 mobile homes, you know, sitting there. So they want to collect it, but from all the little guys, I'll say, it's a pain in the behind for no more money than we get. And as Nancy said, we don't really get. The county itself gets basically nothing for all of this administrative work that we do, you know, correcting bills when they're wrong, or it's not the right person, and you're going after this one and going after that one. So between the assessor's office, the auditor's office, you know, they have to make those corrections, then we get the end of the line. All of that stuff is so time-consuming, you know, trying to do it. We finally managed to, because we have the resource to do it, to get the mobile home tax sale back in the day. A lot of the smaller counties don't because they don't have the personnel or the wherewithal to do that. So they send it to a judgment, and I would guess, out of judgments, Nancy, probably you don't collect 10% of that ever. It just goes in, it's just, you know, it's just a lost cause. So, you know, when Senator Roth took this bill, I wanted to commend him and Nancy because we spend a lot of money, and we have every year trying to collect. It's kind of like you're spending a dollar to collect a nickel. You know, if you could actually weigh the time spent in manpower and resources and everything else to do what those three offices do for this little bit, it just doesn't weigh out. So that's when they, and the legislators and the other treasurers, who I'm sure testified for this, you know, to the legislature, and said, here's why we're asking this, that it made sense to a lot of them, and they heard from their local people as well. It just is a lot of time spent for gaining nothing, for the most part. Not always, but the majority of the time, it is not.
So have these taxing units been notified that this is on the agenda to take their revenue away?
I didn't notify anyone. This is the first. Because if you're against it, there's not really any reason to pursue it. The mobile home park owners know the bill is out there and knows it's passed, and they called and wanted to know if you have passed it. And I told them, we haven't spoke with you about it yet. Haven't done anything. So we're still at the beginning stage.
Is there a deadline that this has to be acted on?
I would think after July 1st, you would want to pass it if you're gonna. So we see it coming, you know, so you know we're going to do it in January 25.
We're the governing body for the whole county, and we collect all the other taxes and pass them through also. I just feel like these people need to have a chance to have a say in it, for sure, before we do anything.
There's no urgency to make the decision tonight or in the next six months. There's no, as far as I know, there's no time limit on imposing this. It would just be whether it's. On imposing this, it would just be whether it's for next year or the year after or the year after.
Right.
It's, it's an option, uh, it's enabling legislation. So, you can, you can choose to, uh, to approve this and, and stop collecting, uh, the taxes on these mobile homes. And it's not all mobile homes, it's not ones that are, are considered real estate, right?
Correct.
It's just ones that are considered personal property.
Right. If it's on real estate, those mobile home titles is what they call retired because then it becomes real estate. It's just the personal property warrants that are in parts.
Nancy, when do the assessors, I can't remember, but when do they start the process for next year on mobile homes? I, I can't remember, do you know?
I would imagine it's ongoing, but January one is the assessment, you know, when you go out.
Or, or already that's somewhere for. Mobile homes starts on January first. It used to be done by the township assessor. And when we done away the township assessor, then it worked through county assessor. I talked to Tim Smith today about a little bit about it. He parred off this legislative truth lead, see, uh, this was they set out. And I give everybody a copy of that. Again, when we start talking about windbreak taxes, and we also want their taxes windbaked too. Mobile home on real estate, if you own the property, it becomes real estate, instead of running personal property. So, uh, it is different personal property than, well, the business has for personal property for your windbreak. So, I think it's something we need to consider and look at and look at all the, all the details of it. What will we make a decision on it?
Ron.
Is, is there any type of, you know, for Richmond, it's a hundred thousand dollars. Is there any type of administrative fee for this that, through an inter-local agreement? That the county could.
It sounds like we could easily try to transfer the loss, but it's, it sounds like at the end of the day, it's loss regardless of which unit pays it or doesn't pay or takes it. Yeah, we can enter, enter locals, they, you know, but really, I think it's a statutory duty if we continue to do it. So, they could probably tell us to pound sand and we can start pounding.
I guess I look at it that it's, it might be a loss for some of these or would be for some of these units, but then we're, we're taking the loss currently because we're paying for all these resources and getting opinions. You know, I'm trying to weigh, what does it cost us to gain this for whoever ga- whoever gets it? That's where I'm coming from with.
I think you need a little historical perspective on it. When Kathy took this on, we had some frequent flyers, if you will, that were really using assistance in contract sales of the mobile homes and units. And she cleaned up that quite a bit, but I think we've, we're now at a point where it's pretty marginal level return for any further effort now.
It just, it just doesn't seem like to me that we collect enough for what it costs us to, to do that process.
But again, the sale, the mobile home sale is totally separate from, uh, from eliminating assessing and collection of tax.
Right, it's just a separate process, but we do that once the people didn't pay the taxes. That's a recourse we have and I believe the law says we don't even have to do that. Nancy would send those to judgment and get nothing.
Ninety-one other counties do not do it.
Correct.
If you're successful in selling a mobile home at a tax sale, that revenue still would go to the other entity, not to us?
We pay, you have to pay the taxes, so if there's, um, I have an example for you. Last year, we sold one mobile home and after we paid the taxes, which that money went to the unit, um, he, he paid one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the mobile home. Nine hundred and sixty-six dollars thirty cents went to pay the taxes. I had a BMV title because then I, as a treasurer, have to petition the BMV to get a title for him. So, it's his, that's fifteen dollars. I paid one thousand five hundred and ten dollars to have the sale, which put us in the hole, seven hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents. I had the money in the mobile home fund to cover it. I have enough to do one more sale before the fund will be out of money. So, we're to that point of.
But again, to me, you're conflating those two issues. There, there is a sale, you can choose not to do a sale. But there's also the collection of the tax, which is a different process.
Without the collection, without the mobile home sale, they go to judgment, ten years later it falls off? Good luck.
Sure. But again, you don't, you don't have to do it, you don't have to go through that process and you don't lose any money.
Right, and I, I could not do one this year.
Well, you still have to file the judgment, so that costs you resources to file the judgments. You still go through that process if you didn't have the sale correct.
You have to.
Goes to the court and then.
We set out a demand fee, we demand they pay them and then it goes to judgment.
Okay.
Because the law says you do one or the other.
You said there were nine hundred some dollars, nine hundred some dollars taxes on that?
Yes. The mobile home I sold last year had been offered three years in a row and finally someone bought it.
So, we have five years taxes there, basically.
Well, mobile homes are taxed and billed the same year.
Yeah, right.
So, during the same year.
Well, it sounded like a lot of taxes on a mobile home three years last year, so.
It's penalty. Yeah, I see yourself, we're gonna have to take answer by. If we have any questions, we'll be contacting you. Okay? Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy.
All right, Beth Fields, you've got a lot on your plate tonight, girl. You're gonna update us on ARPA?
It's really not too bad. So, in front of you, you have the ARPA expenditures. The sheet we're gonna talk about first is called help projects. The backside says not help, so let's make sure we're all on the same page. So, these are the projects that came out of this strategic investment plan that council approved, commissioners approved, the city of Richmond, as well as all of our help communities, Spring Grove, Dublin, East Germantown, Elton, Cambridge City and Economy. So, nothing about this is new, this is just an update. As you can see, column D shows what we spent. So, that's the activity of any movement on the help project, either a project that is in process or is completed. Um, and then your remaining balance is column G. So, as you can see, we're just getting started. So, before we flip it over, I'll see if you have any questions about those projects that are currently in works for help.
So, do these con- do these groups have contracts or anything to meet the end of this year requirements or what do we stand on that?
Wayne County must commit all these funds by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four.
Do we need a bill of sale or an invoice?
Correct, exactly. So, committing isn't, council says it's okay and appropriated. Treasury says committing isn't, isn't invoice or a purchase order or a contract. Then we can, we have time to spend it after we get that seen at the place.
Or, an inter-local agreement.
And an MOU.
We're gonna have it signed tonight.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna sign three of those, we're gonna approve three of those tonight.
And we are very cognizant of that deadline and getting these funds committed, not by our committed standard, by the US Treasury standard of obligation, actually is the word that they use.
This is money that we have committed to spend. Idol C Economy on there as a project, it needs to be sold.
Well, on the, the creating places line eighteen, we took all the communities that the county has contributed, ten thousand two, and it was all in one line item. And in fact, economy is listed under the notes, economy in East Germantown is complete, they've received it.
Yeah, two of them.
Yeah. Okay, on the help projects? Okay? So, on the backside, are those projects that council and commissioners approved? Starting back in twenty-two, at the end of twenty-two, we spent some money on radios, that's complete, it's done. Twenty-three, you committed to the projects listed. Some, like my position, is ongoing. Um, the scanning of records with the clerk, that's ongoing. Sheriff's vehicles, we gave the money, we bought them, it's done. Big utility consultants, that is still ongoing. You said the highway can buy something, they did, it's done. So, now we go into those projects that have been approved by council and commissioners in twenty-four. And just like on the front page, you have how much money you committed, what we spent so far, if there's any notes and what is left. And a lot of the spending on these projects, Steve is in charge of the project. I'm in charge of the paperwork cleanup and getting the reporting to the US Treasury. So, the twelve point seven nine seven million that Wayne County conceded, between what we committed, what we paid, what is uncommitted, we balanced the penny. Today, I started working on conveying that same message to the US Treasury. It's a little harder. We'll get it done.
Uncommitted will increase if the horse barn roof comes in at sixty-one thousand, under a hundred and thirty-five. So, that, that uncommitted will increase.
And, and the commissioner spoke about that a little bit today of how that's going to be massaged and managed, et cetera. We'll work on that.
And don't forget that there is one billion, five thousand dollars and some change that we all agreed we would spend ARPA money instead of funding primarily from the general fund and that we would, we would put that money into a project line item that we all agreed would, would have to have agreement of council and commissioners to be able to spend that money. So, that's where we're at, at the moment with that amount, one million, five thousand dollars.
Five and.
Five. One million, five thousand.
Oh.
And some change.
Four million, five thousand.
And change. And I, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna put, we're gonna start having that on a spreadsheet. We'll share with you, but I put that up.
And do we have some other things in the pipeline to spend, um, like, just like that extra from the roof?
Uh, exactly. And so, and so, if that goes into a, replacing a general fund commitment, we can add that into, into this fund, that four hundred and fifty thousand that's still not committed. If that's committed to something that the general fund was already slated to pay, that would go to that category as well, just from my perspective. But we're, we're well on the way. Steve, do you wanna give an update on where we're at with the, uh, the Main Street revitalization?
Right, Main Street revitalization program, as you know, you've got a pot of money that each community who participates in help will be able to apply for a grant, uh, for repairing a for-profit building. And Beth has already sent out, uh, a mailer to every, every business owner, every property owner that is in that designated downtown area. And I think you've already started receiving some, couple of phone calls. We've actually received our, actually received our first application today. It's a little short, we need some additional information. But that project has launched and we'll be taking applications through.
July one.
July one.
And remember that that is a million dollars of county ARPA funds paired with a million dollars of city of Richmond ARPA funds. And they, they asked us to administer the application process, but the city of Richmond money will be spent just in the city of Richmond. The county dollars will be spent in any of the communities that are participating in, in help. So, uh.
Except Dublin?
No.
It has a clue.
Right, all of them. So, it's only the stellar program that Dublin is excluded from. Um, we're also, uh, in the process of, of, uh, working with the EDC and Sarah Mitchell in particular on the blight, the blight elimination project. Uh, you wanna give a quick.
Yeah, and we identified, oh my, um, what, twenty, twenty-five or thirty? Homes, I say column homes, structures throughout the county that have been identified as unsafe. And so, this blight money will be used for those communities to tear down those homes. And then they will go after the property owner they put. And then that money that they recoup it goes back into their unsafe building fund. So, it could be a, a pot of money that pays forward for that community. We're also committed to help the economy a little bit. There, you know, a lot of these smaller communities don't have the manpower, uh, they don't have full-time staff. And so, our unsafe building office will be helping economy facilitate their program.
And on a positive note, uh, the county has been working on three unsafe buildings to, uh, to demolish. And we're finding now that two of those are, are gonna take care of it on their own. So, uh, there won't be that expense. Remember that the funding for this project is coming from, slated to come from, three hundred and ninety thousand from county edit and three hundred and ninety thousand from consolidated edit. The county edit, uh, will be available to any of the participants in the help program. The consolidated edit funding will be available to any of the communities that are involved in, in contributing to consolidated edit. So, it broadens the pool of communities that are able to participate. I would say that, that potentially, uh, as we get closer to the deadline of deciding how the money, how the ARPA dollars are spent, it would be possible to move some of this expense over to ARPA instead of county edit. At this point, that's how we have it allocated.
Jeff, do you happen to have the particulars of how that project, how that program runs for a homeowner that has something that's taken down?
It's not for homeowners, it's for communities. So, communities that have identified, uh, structures that are unsafe and are gonna require, uh, the owner to tear that down or have it torn down for them uh, through a legal process.
That's what I meant by the homeowner, eventually they own it, something's gonna happen.
Correct, but we are not, we are not giving money to homeowners, property owners who want to tear down a structure. It has to go through that unsafe building.
Yeah, that, that's what I was asking. Ultimately, they're property, but here's the process to go through.
And, and they, they're identified by their community as having an unsafe structure. They'll be given, uh, notice that they have thirty days, sixty days to do something with that property, uh, in this case, to demolish it. Or, the community will step in and do that for them and put a lien on the property for, until that money is recovered. So, that's the process. Everybody, every community that's gonna participate has agreed to follow that process and follow it through to place a lien on the property. And so, and Steve. And so, again, Steve and Sarah Mitchell at the EDC, who managed the light program for the city of Richmond a few years ago. Sarah is managing this process. And we're helping out where we can, and in particular for an economy that doesn't have the experience with doing this.
I just wanted to ask because it's a different process than before, and I don't want people to think, oh, it's the same thing, and then find out later. It's not the same thing.
A different process than before.
What the city did, because they would buy their property and the people got something rather than, there you go, this is different.
They had to actually agree to sell their property. It is dramatically different than what the city did. This is through unsafe building process.
I just wanna clarify that for the people watching, this is nothing like the other ones, so.
They're not buying properties.
And it's not a fix-up program either. These are, these are structures that's been identified as needing to be removed.
But the towns will have a money in as far as their town.
Correct, and we are providing the funding, they're providing the legal process. And then if, if there is any money collected from the liens, the legal process is that that money collected has to go back into the unsafe building fund for that community. So if that happens, to the extent that that happens, they'll be able to move on to other properties and eliminate more blight.
Most of the units don't even have an unsafe building fund, so this is kind of a way to indirectly seed it and hopefully increase some continuity to it. And we have an unrevered fund, but we've never really had to dip into it very deeply because it's not that deep a fund to begin with.
True.
Do most of those places have unpaid taxes, I'll think?
Um, most of them, yes.
And so we will re-get that somehow?
It will go through a process because that lien will go on to the taxes, a tax sale for most of them, many of them. And then ultimately, if it doesn't sell at a tax sale, which you would think it wouldn't because the building has been removed as part of the light process, then it would go to a commissioner's sale. The county, the commissioners would have to determine whether or not we wanted to take the title to that property. We're talking to the towns about whether they would wanna take title to the property. So there's probably not a lot of a call for the purchase of vacant lots in a lot of small towns. If I could take one more minute to share...
You can take one more minute.
To share the report from Dunn. This is our weekly report, planning to give it to you Monday. So we have health accounts in Dunn and Associates with our health insurance funding. So we actually ticked it, we're at about four point six million dollars. We're past run, we're at about four point two or three. So we've improved our position and reserves for the health insurance program. Just wanted to give you an update. The hour, I'll remind you again, Kathy Dunn from Dunn and Associates is going to be at our afternoon session to talk to us about where we're at with the health insurance program at one thirty. She'll be with us, so any of you are welcome to attend if you wanna get more information about how our health insurance program is working.
Is that everything?
No.
I was gonna go on to these. Are you ready for this?
Thank you. So as part of the help projects, we have to have an interlocal agreement so we can grant these communities the funds so we have a proper paper trail to satisfy state board of towns. So what Beth has in front of her, you all received by email previously, there's an interlocal agreement for Dublin for their sidewalk project. A second interlocal agreement with Dublin for their Wilson Park upgrade, which is their Creating Places project. And last I looked, I think they had twenty-six thousand, forty-five thousand gold, so that's really great. Last is Spring Grove, they had one project for help, which was upgrades to their website. So we have an interlocal agreement so the county can grant those funds. Dublin's third project wants the CBPG funds and Oprah will kill that tree, so I don't have to mess with that. If help would approve those, please, we will be able to make payments to these communities for the funds that we promised you the strategic investment.
So I just need a motion to, that we approve these three interlocal agreements that we all signed. Motion in a couple seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There are none.
Thank you.
And it's passed around, there's two of each one, so you'll be signing six. Hopefully, if Milton, I hope to have one piece of information so I can get their Creating Places done, maybe by your council meeting. And then the mural project will be next at the Family Resource Center, I believe.
For the foreseeable future, you'll have some of these to approve at each year.
Probably, yeah, we just ask them to push them. So, thank you, council.
Are you all done?
Yes.
Thank you for that. There was one more thing I saw laying out here that I didn't realize I had. We had an executive session on Wednesday, April the third, and there are minutes from that that we need to approve. So I need a motion to approve this.
So.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There are none.
Commissioner's already approved this.
Yes.
So, so if anybody has anything else from their committee staff?
I was at the health department, the health board meeting yesterday, and I know they've already talked to you and Max, but they are looking at, it looks like there's a few county employees that they want to hire new jobs for. So just to give you a heads up, that will be coming down the pike. I know, they said you are, Dr. Jett was already talking to you and you two and Jeff. So I just wanted to let, you know, the rest of us know, they are looking at some, some more full-time jobs. Now, granted, like they said, these are from grant, part of them are from grants, and when the grant's gone, whenever that may be, those employees would be gone also. Because I know a lot of times council is well area of hiring more full-time people because of the, all the benefits and so on and so forth. But if they are then going to cover the cost of all that with the grants, and the grant allows that, then, you know, they just want us to be open-minded about that.
Dr. Jettmore has also committed to me that if you approve these, when they formally ask for it, that they would cover any cost of separation for those employees, so if there were uncut costs, for example, they would, they would fund those out of, they have a couple of funds that have a significant...
Bottom line for council is, he has a funding stream to pay for all this. I love it, people should have to take a pay for it, so.
So he's working, they are working with Kim to come up with job descriptions and all that to present the concept to us, maybe. We may, we may, Sally, but prior to that meeting, whatever, if we, prior to when we do discuss it, we'll send some information out.
They have, they have two, two separate grants that one, that are contracted out, and the one contractor is gone. But they're trying to, and those two kind of marry together. And so it makes more sense when you listen to them, if those were county employees, where they could talk to one another rather than separate groups trying to get together. But that'll all be part of the plan with, they would pay for those employees as well. So they have lots of changes with that new, the first grant coming down the pike. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Not, oh.
Your turn.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Says the guy who so has the taxes, I like, but he's passed anyway. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't have a rider's pass for the fourth over there.
Thank you, everyone.